And I'll open with a prayer and we'll stand for the pledge. Lord, thank you for this beautiful morning. Thank you for the sunshine. And just, Lord, as we absorb that and we think about all the weather that we've had, we're, we really are thankful in all things. And let us not complain about the rain because it could be in just a short period of time, we'll, we'll want some more. So, Lord, we're just grateful that you take care of us in all circumstances. And, Lord, here shortly, we'll be, we'll be displaying an American flag. And as we, as we do that, or we just reflect upon the freedoms we enjoy here in this, in this country, this land that we love, Lord, we should never take those for granted. And most importantly, for the men and women who make the sacrifice and those who pay the ultimate sacrifice, those are the ones who deserve our love and respect and our honor. In May, as we take up the business this morning, we would be eager to learn. We would be, our desire would be to fulfill our responsibility to the best that we can in a way that would honor you and serve our community. And we just ask all this in your precious son's name. Please do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And be seated. Minutes for June 10th have been presented. If you've had a chance to take a look at those, unless there's any changes, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 10th.
I wasn't.
You want to observe, but I'm going to sustain from the second.
Did you read the minutes?
I did look over them.
Okay, alright, just want to make sure we didn't slip anything on you there while you were gone. Okay, I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. And it's approved. Next, we have Lauren Mitchell and Robert Jedley. I believe Robert's a board member for Lane Change. And Lauren's been here before the commission before. And I distributed, Lauren sent me information last week, and I did distribute that. I did forward it to both of you. So I hope you've had a chance to look at that. If not, I have it pulled up and, and we can look at that as we hear Lauren's presentation. So Lauren, good morning. Thanks for being here.
Yeah.
Turn the floor over to you.
Okay, great. I'm Lauren. I don't know that I have formally that.
Joe Walsh.
Joe.
I'm Eric.
Eric, I know your wife and your father-in-law, so I know your family. So, yeah, I come today representing the organization that I've been blessed to be able to serve as a director. We're going to be celebrating six years next week as an organization here in our community. Just a quick history, backstory. So I was raised here in Lake Creek County, graduated from Conway in '04. Met my husband. He's a graduate from Lebanon. And started dating. He tore his ACL when he was 21, became dependent on pain medication. So I watched him for 10 years battle this opioid dependency. And if you have ever known anyone that has struggled, you understand what that is. So not only did he struggle with pain medication, he also struggled with alcohol. So it was just this back and forth battle, watching him struggle, not knowing what to do or how to help. And so I was a teacher at the time. I graduated from OTC with an associate's, jury with my bachelor's. And then later I got my master's also from jury. Taught first grade here in Lebanon. All while my husband was struggling. And in the fall of 2016, my husband hit his rock bottom and decided that he needed to go somewhere to get help. And we didn't know where do you go, who do you call, how do you get help? Luckily, we had found Celebrary Recovery at LifePointe and had been going there for a little while. And they helped us find inpatient treatment for him. And his story is unlike a lot of people, if they want help, it's hard to get help immediately. But while he was in treatment, I attended a women's conference, and I was still teaching at the time. And God put a vision on my heart, and it was to open a resource center here in our community. And not only just a place for people to go, but a place for people to stay. And so the vision was a residential program. And that, like I said, was in the fall of 16. And I'm like, I'm a teacher. What, like, how do you do that? So my husband completed his treatment, got plugged in. I'm, I'm so thankful. He is in recovery. He's doing amazing. Two years later, so fall of 16 is when God put the vision on my heart. Two years later, we had a young man die in our community from fentanyl overdosed and was wanting help, was wanting treatment as well, but couldn't get the help that he needed. On the day of his funeral, his twin sister got the phone call that his bed was ready. And all she could say was, it's too late. And so that, I knew his family. My dad grew up with his dad. I had his niece in my first grade classroom. Like, I was connected to their family, like most of us are, even though it is a big town, it's a small town. We're all connected in one way or another. And that was the catapult. That was it. I was like, it's time now. We can't have this happen again. If someone wants help, they should be able to get the help that they need. So we started gathering board members, because we are a nonprofit. And Robert's on our board. He's been personally affected by substance use as well. And it is a disease. It is something that people need help for. It is not as easy as they can just stop. And that was what I thought my husband should just do for so long. Just quit. Just quit using it. And it's not that easy. So we opened our doors June 24th, 2019. We started just by being open a few days a week as like a walk-in facility for people to come. We had a counselor available. We started doing just recovery groups. We quickly grew to not just being open two days a week, but five days. We've been able to expand into a larger office space. We're located across from the pool, Basel Park. That's the strip that we've been in the entire time that we've been here. We have moved to be able to expand because we do have large groups. So we offer outpatient services. Those, a large array of services. So we do groups, daily groups. We have peer support. So peers are people that are in recovery themselves. So now they're on the other side of it. They're living a life of recovery. And I call them my boots on the ground because they've been there. They know what it takes. We do counseling. So I've got a counselor. She's an LPC, so a licensed therapist. We contract with her because she has a private practice, but she uses one of our offices to see clients. We do a lot of case management, connecting people to other resources because we know at Lane Change, we don't do everything. So we connect, we connect our clients to other resources, other resources in our community so that their recovery can be sustainable. We want them to find what works for them. We are a huge advocate for other community supports and making sure that people have the support necessary. We work inside the jail. So we go in several times a week. We have a men's group, a ladies' group. We do one-on-ones with those individuals who are sitting, right? And want to start getting engaged with services. We have a system where we can kind of vet the ones that, you know, might just want to try to use that as a, get out of my pod for a little bit. So the jail staff are amazing to work with to kind of help us to determine the ones that are serious or not. I did gather some data for you, so just to kind of give you an idea. So in 2024, we had, now, some of these are duplicated, right? So as long as they're in jail and as long as they're doing well, they can come to as many groups as they want. But we had a total of 900 that we counted in 2024. So 900 engaged in a group or a one-on-one session while sitting in jail. And then so far, here in 2025, so from January to May, we've got 298. So from 2024 until current, we've got 1,198 people that we've been able to provide services for. And that's just getting, getting them connected, getting them engaged. Helping them to maybe have some tools when they get out and some familiar faces so that they know where to go. They know what they can do instead of going back to the same thing. So we have been fully immersed in this opioid epidemic that we hear so much about. And that's one of the reasons Randy mentioned, I've been to these meetings prior because I was a huge advocate for this opioid settlement money. Because it is a crisis. I've been personally affected by it. Robert's been personally affected by it. Our community has been personally affected by it. I mentioned the numbers of deaths in our community in my proposal that I sent to you. It's not just about the deaths that we've, that have affected us. It's this trickle-down. And we're here because we know that recovery is something that not only can happen for individuals in our community, but is truly a beautiful process to see people that might be sitting in jail with charges against them find freedom from that dependency because it truly is a dependency. It's a, it's something that their bodies, they need. It's like a fight or flight type of thing. And so one of the things that we are very passionate about, not only helping people, but also helping our community to reduce stigma. You know, that the people that are struggling aren't lowlifes. They're not, I mean, they do have criminal behavior, but that's not their heart. When my husband was struggling, he was not the same person when he was Clayton sober. It changes them. And so that's a part of what we want to do in our community is also reduce stigma and help our, help our people become productive members of our community, to serve and to give back. That's why our peers are so passionate about the work that they do. It's not the money. I've got a peer who volunteers. It's because he caused issues in our community, and now he wants to give back to the community that he took from. And so it really is a beautiful process to see that happen, see that change happen. We work with the schools as well. So we work with adolescents who are struggling. You know, we, we know that true change is probably going to happen there when we have young people who are making a conscious decision not to follow in the footsteps of their families because a lot of this is generational. It's passed down. And so we work inside Hillcrest School. We have an MOU with the school. John, one of our volunteers, goes in and works with students at Hillcrest. We also go in during Red Ribbon Week at the middle school, and we do some presentations and talk with middle schoolers. Because it's not just say no. That's what we all grew up with. Just say no to drugs, right? It's not just say no anymore. It's if you say yes, this is what could happen. You can end up in prison. You can end up with charges on your record that now you can't be that school teacher or you can't be that police officer that you dreamed up whenever you were little. So educating our young people is also a part of the work that we do at Lane Change. Aside from all of that, I told you, we are growing. We're expanding. We've been growing from the beginning because God gave me a vision of it being a residential program. And that's why Robert's here, because he lost his daughter. It'll be three years, right, in July. When he came on board as a board member, his daughter had been struggling since high school, right?
Well, she went through a season, and really, it's like, it's funny, this opioid settlement, this is correct, $7.4 billion. Is that what the Sackler family was ruled to have to pay the government? I believe that's around the dollar figure. So it's, that's very personal with me because that's when it all started, my daughter, about the time that those were being passed, you know, pills were being passed around like M&amp;M's. She was a minor, didn't even have a fully developed brain. You know, in basically ninth grade is about the time that all started from opioids. She wasn't able to pull it together, got in trouble, managed to get, you know, find sobriety in '09 with the threat of going to prison. She took about an eight-year break from it all. 2018, that monster comeback, except this time it wasn't opioids. It was a lot worse. And for a four-and-a-half-year journey along the way, you know, that's when, as a city board member at that time, one reason why I got on the board, well, Lauren asked me to be on the board, but was, I knew that I needed to learn everything there was about this addiction and the disease with it. And during this whole journey, you know, what I learned was very tough love that no parent should have to go through. You know, you have nothing to work with whatsoever. If you have a loved one, especially your own daughter, of all things, you know, the only thing you've got to fall back on honestly when you're trying to get them off the streets is, is a possibility to turn a jail cell. And, and there's, you know, we, we did give her to go to a one, you know, 120-day treatment. But what I learned during this four-and-a-half years is, it's a mental health crisis. It's a moral choice in the very beginning that like so many people that's in that world, as Lauren said, like her husband, these are not hardcore criminals, most of them. They're just good Christian, like my daughter, you know, she was not a criminal. And she, she become, developed a substance use disorder, disease. And I know that's tough for a lot of people to swallow. They could possibly be a disease. They look at it as a moral issue, and it's a choice. But that window closes so fast when you're in that world, especially if you get into hardcore drugs, you ever made it to a psychosis state, then your mind's affected. It becomes a mill crisis then. And it's just like, how do you reason with someone that's mentally sick? And that's where my daughter was at for four-and-a-half-year journey. And, and so I played an active role in getting her put in prison, getting her arrested because it was, it was, it was do or die. It was literally life or death. I knew that because she was overdosing. I, you know, you do what you gotta do, but it's life or death. And that's, and it's very tough to have to make those decisions. And so that, that 120, the prison sentence you typically get when you're in that world is not enough to reset the chemicals in your brain, your serotonin level, your dopamine levels. I'm not a medical expert, don't claim to be one. But I, but my daughter taught me so much about addiction. And, and, and she opened up, in the beginning, she did not want to, you know, work with her dad. But when she realized that you, you were trying to save her life, it would become a different story. And so the reason for the housing for me was, is it'd become very apparent if not everybody's going to check the box to enter into Lane Change's program for a long-term treatment. But there's people out there, lots of people out there. If you can get them to that state and they do check the boxes, they would enter into our program if we had housing. But we don't have housing. And so there's programs that exist that we, we model it off of in Florida that have an unbelievable success rate if you stay in the program between 15 to 24 months. And so with Lauren's vision that she had when she come on and what God's vision gave me, because every time we would end the conversation with Shayla, she would always say, God's got a plan. And then when, you know, she's not with you no more, not condescending, not arrogant, not facetious, you ask God, well, what's the plan now? And, and in that moment, for me, it was immediately, you know, a city board member to, to do this, to try to get a housing program. And what I learned during this, also this four-and-a-half-year journey, was how tough it is as far as setting on the board to raise money. It's something that most churches, they, they have their programs and they do their thing. And I'm not knocking churches. But when you look at state, federal programs, most of them, and Lauren's more than expert than that than I am, you know, you can't talk about God or you can't, you know, you have to tiptoe around all that, anything to do with your faith if you're getting funding from this type of people. So it's, you know, our journey is, how do you grow this lane change? Especially to the magnitude where we're going to talk, we're getting housing. And do that with just private donors. And we, we've been blessed. We've been amazed that there's a handful of people that stepped up to the plate. But what we need is the community behind this a bigger way. What we need is if there's money from an opioid settlement, especially $7.4 billion, and that's my understanding, what it was a year or so ago, we need to ever dime that. We should, I should not have spent a dime of my money to build this thing that was created by this family that's took thousands of lives, including, they got their fingerprints on my daughter's grave from the very beginning of this, because that's where it all started at. And so I'm here as a voice for Lauren today. We're going to get this thing done one way or the other. We would love to have the community on board, but we trust God. And our faith is that the money will come, and we'll get it built.
So we say all that to say Shayla's White House. So Shayla passed away in, on July 2nd, 20.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. So three years in July. And this is what we're looking to build. So there are going to be three houses that will house, that will house four girls each. This is a community building where they'll do dinners together with a commercial-style kitchen. There's, I'm just going to lay these out so you can kind of see them. Here's the commercials, the commercial kitchen. There'll be a small, little weight room. This is a very cocooned environment. So we want them living together, working together, protected, much like the treatment court program. You know, it's an 18 to 24-month program. We're going to kind of base that around this as well, 18 to 24 months. The longer they're in the program, the more likely they have that solid, sustainable foundation that they need to be successful. And so this is some of the money that we asked for in the, in the proposal to help us get started. Our goal is to be able to itemize every single need that we have in order to build these, from windows to doors to furniture to light fixtures, and let the community say, oh, I'll, I'll buy a door. I'll buy a window. Itemize it so that the whole community has an opportunity to help us to get these built. I'll buy a, what, a rafter, you know, whatever it is. But there are things like concrete and, you know, the dirt work that needs to get started. All of those things, I mean, obviously, we've got a little bit of seed money. But, you know, we're looking at getting some help from you all just to help, you know, get the project started. We have the land that was donated. It is right outside, it's still inside city limits, where Ostrich, no, yeah, Morgan Road meets Ostrich, right past the trailer park on the left-hand side.
So just past Ostrich Lane?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like you're, you're going past McDonald's, Big Whiskies.
Yeah, around about.
Straight south. It's on the left, just past the, I think it's Oakwood Trailer Park, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a vacant lot there in the front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so we have our, our engineer drawings, and now we have the artist renderings. So we're going to get started with, you know, basically laying out all of our needs in order to get this done.
So it's three houses, 12 beds.
And this is just to start.
Right.
We know that, and I've talked with multiple judges who could potentially court order them to complete our program. And one judge out of Camden County told me, well, 12? Well, I can give you 12 right now. So we're hoping that this could even be something that they could court order to do instead of going to prison if they don't qualify for like a treatment court program, if that makes sense. So we're looking at partnering, you know, with, with our courts as well in order to keep people out of prison because we know that that system, that system hasn't helped.
I think the biggest misconception about addiction is to get someone that's, like I said, a psychosis state, you can't, you cannot fix that problem in 120 days. A prison sentence does, I, I mean, my daughter went to prison twice. And we went to, she spent, I don't know how many months in the county jail. That, that urge to want to do it, that, that brain is still telling them, hey, I need this drug just like me and you in this room. If you suck the oxygen out of this room, it's going to tell that same mechanism that you need to get oxygen or you're going to die. That's what's going on in the brain. And that's why it's so difficult for someone, you know, just to white-knuckle their way to sobriety. I'm not saying you can't white-knuckle your way to sobriety, and it has happened. But most people do white-knuckle their way to sobriety. They, faith is leading force behind it. And that's what's so amazing about Lane Change, the people that's graduated our programs, that's went through drug court, and the people that's, that's found long-term sobriety. I've not met hardly anyone in my entire life that found long-term sobriety, that felt, seen the gates of hell in that life, that did some form or fashion give back. And that's what's amazing. That's what will run this facility, will be your graduates. That's what runs most all addiction centers, is the people that find their way out of it. Much like myself, even though drugs was not what I was on. But my daughter taught me something that when you know, you know, how do you turn your back and walk away and you call yourself a Christian? How do you do that when you know the sufferance that these people are going through? Now, is everyone in the, in the addiction world not a criminal? No, there's lots of criminals that won't enter our program. This won't be for everybody. I'm not trying to send a message that, oh, everybody that's doing that is, you know, that there is people that will not qualify for our program. But the people like my daughter, who was not a criminal, that had a full-blown disease, a mental health crisis on top, you know, she had a mental disease, and she wanted to quit. She didn't, she wanted her kids back. That, that's not, that was not long, it was not possible unless you could find somewhere to park her for a long term. And that's what the ultimate goal is at Lane Change. We don't want just to be a resource center, give them, give them, you know, you come and, and, and stay with us a little while, then go back out on the street, fail over and over and over again. Or if you, you know, if you want truly long-term sobriety, that's, that's our goal. And along the way, we're going to share God, the faith, and, and, and so that's why it's so hard for us. We're not going to take money if we can't talk about God. So.
Do you have any questions about the pictures at all that I shared? Because I'm going to go through real quick a breakdown of this request that we submitted. You guys had any questions that you came across as you were looking at the proposal at all? So I had asked for $5,000 as a part of this for counseling and case management. And that will provide 250 hours of counseling and case management. We don't bill insurance. We don't require upfront payment from our clients. We are a true nonprofit, free services if they don't have the funding to be able to provide that financial support for themselves because we see that keeping people from getting the help that they need, they can't afford it. They can't afford, they don't have insurance or Medicaid or Medicare or any, any insurance that, that the state can provide. Peer support, that's, like I said, that is all three. So I've got a volunteer. He's part-time. He basically gives us 20 hours a week. And then two employees, one full-time, one part-time. All three are peer support specialists. So just like what Robert said, we've got people coming out of that world wanting to give back because they have the freedom and they want other people to have that same freedom that they have. And so that peer support, I've got $6,996 set aside. Will provide 224 hours of peer support services specifically at the jail. That's 10 hours a week at the jail is what we're currently giving them. I have funding that will be set aside for training that's required for credentials. So we are all credentialed through the Missouri Credentialing Board. Peer support, credentials, I've got a substance use counseling credential. We're doing crisis credentialing so that we're able and more equipped to be able to help our clients in crisis because that happens frequently. And so that's something that we say on top of. And so that staff training and certification, that money is set aside for, for credentialing and training and those things that are necessary to keep our credentials up to date. and those things that are necessary to keep our credentials up to date. I have outreach and resources, 2% of our annual budget for outreach and resources. We do a ton of outreach opportunities, not only for our clients to be a part of, to give back, but also to give our, our clients an opportunity to have fun in recovery. We do barbecues and fish fries, and we just did a recovery prom. Most of our clients ever went to prom in high school, they either had dropped out, or I heard from a lot of the girls, they were pregnant, they didn't go to prom when they were pregnant in high school. So we give our clients opportunities to have fun in recovery, and that's what keeps them coming back. It's because they can see, man, this, this is fun, this is a good life. And we wanna be able to keep providing that. And then we have a 10% of annual budget for administration costs. I mean, that's everything from, you know, copies to office supplies, to things to just keep our doors open. And so if you have any questions about the budget breakdown, I mean, now's the time. But I basically went off of our current overall budget, right now we're running about $120,000 a year budget. And of course, that will expand when we get our houses built, and we have those costs. But we're hoping with the help of our community, we'll get these, we'll get this built, and then it will just be utilities and maintenance and staff. And we're, you know, we're currently looking at other grants to help, you know, with that once we get, once we get moving. But, but we've not broken ground yet, and we're hoping once we do break ground, we're about a year out from start to finish. Because we are, we are gonna depend on help, and we know that people aren't gonna be able to replace their current jobs, helping us with drywall and, you know, getting the houses built. But again, we're trusting God to provide all of that.
I will add one other thing, that, you know, for a little bit better understanding about the housing project. The ladies that'll be coming into our program, it will be in a cocooned environment, they're not gonna be roaming the streets, they're not gonna be working at a factory or anything like that. We're gonna create a workshop down at the, at the shopping center. So with the 12 girls, if we get maximum capacity, there will be a staff member living onsite out there. They won't be allowed to even go down to the gas station, you can't leave the facility unless you, you're, you know. And so with that being said, the program is, is really just completely separate them and, and, and let them, you know, break that hopelessness and the bondage that, you know, that this addiction keeps them in. And in the same token, you know, we, we don't wanna be interacting with somebody that's going to drown them back down. So just to give you a little bit better, clearer picture, what it looks like if you enter into the program, you will be, you know, you'll be in our, you know, really in our care, so to speak. So we'll, we'll certainly, I think that, that makes a huge difference.
For sure. So I went through, you, did you guys have a chance to go through this, to look at the allowable expenditures? I highlighted, if you wanna go back and look at that, these are all of the highlighted areas that we hit on in our, in our program. And so, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that we would be good stewards of the money that we receive. Because we already are doing a lot of the allowable uses that the opioid settlement has set aside, as far as these are the things that you can use the money for. We're doing a lot of those already. And I did wanna also add, I'm super transparent, I want to be held accountable. So if we are granted opioid settlement funds from the county, I would love to come back and share with you how we use up that money. And if we don't use it, I'll give it back to you. I want to be completely transparent. I think it, any of the nonprofits in our community that are receiving money from the community should be transparent and should be open to questions about how the money is being used. And like I said, if we don't use it, we'll give it back. But I promise you, with the work that we're already doing and the way that we're gonna be expanding, we'll use it.
It's just gonna be like a gated community?
Well, yeah.
I mean, we're gonna fence it.
The goal is, I mean, you know, as far as we're, we wanna create an environment that, that is like, you know, you live in at home with your family. We don't want it to feel institutionalized, so as far as, no, we're not gonna have like prison gate-type deal. We're gonna have it, you know, if they, they jump the fence and they run, then that's something that can happen, you'll be kicked out of the program. There'll be, we've got a motto to go off of in Florida, where these people in, in Florida have, have created a program. They house 54 girls, they got a seven, eight-year head start on us. They, and they're growing their program now to 108 girls. They're doubling the capacity of it right now when they fundraise the rest of the money. But they got 54 girls, they have, you know, there's gonna be, there's always gonna be someone in the program that, that won't make it. I mean, that's, that's reality of it, but if, like Lauren said, if it's court-ordered and, you know, then it'll be, it'll be a situation where you'll, you'll probably go back and, and, and have to be accountable in front of a judge, so. But it's just an alternative of the prison, because prison in 120 days will do absolutely near nothing. If you are really in a, a substance use disease, and that's.
Well, and that's the cool thing about this, is we house them, but we also are working with them on a daily basis. So they're doing all of their support, treatment support with us, you know what I mean? So it's, it's full circle, a great continuity of care. Because not only are we building a relationship with them, but we also have our finger on their pulse as far as their treatment and where they're at with their, with their support and what they need to be successful. And we want them to want to be there, obviously, there has to be that as well. And of course, if they're court-ordered and they don't want to be there in the, in the beginning, we are hoping that through this process, they, they learn that this is what they needed. And this is ultimately what they want for their, for their lives, so.
I would finish this up, what I would say. My, I'm here today as a voice also, not just for Lane Change, but for every parent, every grandparent, every child that's lost their parent to, to, to this disease, I'm that voice. Because there is so much goes on behind the scenes, the suffering with family members, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles. You know, it's, it's, it just tears families apart and like, you know, innocent children getting stripped from their parents. Because you have to, you have to have the DFS get involved, you have to take the children's lives. But the ultimate goal too for us is if there's children, that these, these participants that come in our program, these ladies, if they are deemed, you know, fit, we immediately want to try to, the, the process, if they graduate our program 15 months, 18 months, we want them to have their children back, that's the ultimate goal. And so, that's not only just that I'm here about the addiction, but, but I know what it's like to be on that side of the fence and have little to no place to go for help, so.
Lauren, if you have some other information you'd like to give to us?
Yeah, I do, I'm gonna lead you with this.
And then what we'll do is, we have the flag raising out there this morning. And I think that they're probably ready to do that. And then when we come back in, as a commission, we'll discuss this, and I will reach out to you
Okay.
after, after a meeting, let you know what we've, what we've done.
Okay. And if you have any questions that come up, please, like I'm an open door, my cell phone number is on my card, call me. Like I said, we're, we're just here to, to grow and to help our community as much as we can.
Jeremiah 29:11, Tim, tell me about that thing right, right quick.
Oh, Robert.
What's that?
Jeremiah 29:11.
Yeah, yeah. Hey.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Robert, thank you.
Thanks for taking the time.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Eric?
Thank you. Yes. Thanks, Randy. Yeah, sounds great, thank you, Joe. Thank you, Eric.
So, Jack, what we're gonna do is the ripple out help, raise Old Glory. And then after that, we're gonna come back in and take up the rest of our agenda, thanks.
Sounds good.